Recording in progress.
All right, let's get going. I'll call to order the town of Mount Desert Planning Board Meeting for October 27th, 2021. Welcome aboard to our hybrid meeting here. We've got three board members present here and two online and I'll make introductions. I'm William Hanlam Chair. We've got Tracy Loftus Keller here, Dave Ashmore. We've got Meredith Randolph on Zoom. And we've got Kristi Anastasia on Zoom. Welcome. And Kristi, you want to give us the Zoom spiel before we get going? Because I know you love doing that.
I can get really good at that.
Yeah.
So, welcome to the planning board meeting. You have probably zoomed before. This is a hybrid meeting. So some folks are in the town meeting location and some people are online. And if you can mute yourself, that'll help keep the audio clean. If I notice someone's got some background noise, I might mute you temporarily just so we can hear what's going on. Please use the chat function to sign in if you are remote right now. So we have a clear idea of who the participants are. And also, you probably noticed this is being recorded. And use the chat to sign in, but let's not use it for side conversations. If you have a question or something you want to bring into the room, be recognized by the chair. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so second item on the agenda tonight, we've got some minutes to approve. We've got the minutes from 8:13. 10:13. That was where we did the fire station and and the Asta Coo. It was a hybrid meeting as well. Myself, Tracy, Kristi, Meredith, and Dave were all present for.
Do you need a motion to approve the minutes?
Of course.
Remind me of the date.
10:13.
10:13. I make a motion to approve the minutes from 10:13, 21.
Dave Ashmore, second. Right. All those in favor? Kristi?
Anastasia, aye.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Myself, William Hanley, aye. Right. Keep rolling. So, item three on the agenda tonight, we have a subdivision approval application. We have a formal application procedures completeness review for where we are looking at sections 421, 422, 423, and five of the subdivision ordinance and section six of the land use zoning ordinance. And tonight, we have subdivision application for 2021. Owner name, A.C. Fernand Sons Incorporated. Agent is Jeff Tunison, Haley Ward. Location is 1049 Main Street, Somerville, Tax Map 10, Lot 147. And the zoning district is Village Commercial, Shoreland Residential 3, and Shoreland Commercial. And the purpose is section 5.13 of the subdivision ordinance, planned revisions after approval, creation of a new lot from a previously approved subdivision. And that was original plan file 41, number 136, recorded April 2nd, 2013. And amendment one, plan file 41, number 146, recorded April 23rd, 2013. And this one where we are just really in completeness review tonight, just making sure the applicants got everything submitted they need to submit. We did not need to advertise this in the newspaper. However, we did notify a butters within a thousand-foot radius, the subject lot. And this is per an email from Kim dated 10/25/2021. And there is a, I saw in the butters list in here. Yeah, great. Is there a date on that by any chance? Why don't we reference Kim's email date down to the 25th? And I'll ask the applicant to introduce the project for us. And start off first if there's any conflict of interest on the board. None heard. The floor is yours. Is he on? Yes.
Good evening. Sean Thies with Haley Ward. Jeff Tunison had a family emergency that he had to attend to tonight, so I'm filling in for Jeff, but I helped prepare the application as I prepared previous subdivision applications that the board has reviewed. So, what the applicant would like to do is there's an existing building. Can I share my screen potentially?
You should be able to.
Yeah. There we go.
So, the subject property is this area of map 10, Lot 147 was Lot 1 of the previous subdivision. And then these other lots were breaking off, broken out of that. And what is being proposed is this where this existing building is located in this development here is a new lot line along this side of the property. So they can sell this building and essentially create a new parcel here to be able to sell that piece of the property. And then retain ownership of the rest of this lot. So it's fairly fairly straightforward. We have the subdivision plan that was submitted to you. This shows, so this is the build, existing building that they want to sell on this, on this parcel. So this would be the new lot line to separate that out. And then the rest of that existing lot would, would remain under their ownership. So it's nothing's really, I guess, proposed to be built or constructed as part of this. It's really just to be able to break off a piece of the property that's previously been developed and for them to be able to sell that building off and retain ownership of the remainder of the land.
Got it.
And because, because this was part of a previous subdivision, it requires an amendment now to create this what would be an additional lot by, by creating this new lot line.
Yep. Any questions from the board?
I have a question. I don't know if it's relevant, but the building that's being sold is in a commercial district. Is the whole subdivision in commercial zoning or is that cut, did it cut through that lot then?
I am, I'm not positive, I guess, of that. I know several of the uses in that area are commercial uses. I'm trying to see if we had here's a zoning map, I believe. Trying to orient myself on this map here.
Should have three zones overlaying the subdivision. Village Commercial, Shoreland Residential 3, and Shoreland Commercial.
Yeah, so the
So that whole subdivision is under, oh.
Yeah.
So yeah, it looks like it's the Village Commercial District. Appears to be the majority of that subdivision area.
What's that red arrow pointing to? Just indicating the lot being parceled off?
I believe so. Yeah, parcel to be subdivided. So essentially, this, this is the entire parcel. Now there'll be a new lot line somewhere in this area to create this new lot and then the rest of this will remain.
Excuse me. Village Commercial does still seem to split that lot. Can you scroll down? Pull the page down?
So, thinking, I was thinking that this was the boundary, the district boundary, which then comes down here and around up. Something like that.
Oh, so what's, what is the red spots? The shading?
The red is to designate the existing parcel.
Oh, so there is the, the parcel line goes up beside that green diagonal line?
Yes.
You good, Meredith?
Yeah, I just, I, it it seems weird, but yep.
Seems like there's just about every zone on that map right there.
Yep.
All righty, any additional questions of the applicant from the board? Right, none, none heard. And I'll explain to the, again, just for the record that we've got, we are here tonight primarily for completeness review. And then we, from, if the application is found complete, then we'll schedule the usually we're doing compliance in the public hearing in one, one evening. And we've got that scheduled for November 10th at the next regular hearing. So in the context of completeness review, really, we're just drilling down through 421, 422, 423, 44, and section five. And then completeness, you know, we'll get into 6A, B, and C, and 59. So there's not any further questions. We'll have an opportunity for public comment on the 10th. And tonight, we're just doing our due diligence and making sure everything's submitted that is supposed to be submitted under the subdivision ordinance. So everybody good with that? Thumbs up. Kristi's nodding her head, yes. Dave, Tracy, we're all good. So let's, let's get going on completeness. And then from you know, if we were to find the application complete, I'd essentially sign off saying it is complete and then we'd see on the 10th. So let's, let's do it. So and thanks, Sean, for compiling a easy-to-follow application too, that greatly expedites things for us here. And you're gonna start following in the application. I don't got my plan in front of me. And here we go. So right, so 421, information on applicant, applicant, applicant name, A.C. Fernand Sons. Two, we've got the agent identified, it's Haley Ward. Three, we've got A.C. Fernand Sons is a corporation licensed to do business in the state of Maine. And they've got an attachment showing the corporate registration. Four, the applicant's address, Haley Ward. Five, who the surveyor was. That's again, Jeff Tunison at Haley Ward. Six, correspondence from the, you know, where the same correspondence, you know, either to A.C. Fernand Sons and Haley Ward. Seven, what they're planning to do with it. They're planning to sell the parcel that's being subdivided. Eight, you know, they state that the applicant doesn't have any interest in any property abutting the parcel to be subdivided. And nine, the subdivision plan covers the entire contiguous holdings of the owner. So that's 421. Anybody want to make a motion on four, on the, well, let me first ask the board, do you guys want to run through all this and then have a motion? Or find a motion on each, each section?
Go through the whole thing?
Dave's saying go through the whole thing and find. Got it. Let's keep going. 422, information on parcel to be subdivided. So we've got a map and lot number identified, map 10, Lot 147. And then they've also got the attachment of, of the tax map. Two, we've got a subdivision plan submitted from Haley Ward. Three, they identify that the property is in the Village Commercial District. Four, they identify the size of the parcel. 20.23 acres. Five, the, they say that the lot's also going to be served by the public sewer and that they don't need test pits. Six, attachment D is the butters list. Seven, there's no restrictive covenants on the deeds. And eight, there's no proposed work associated with subdivision that require an erosion sedimentation control plan. They're just adding a new lot line and creating a lot to parcel off and be sold. And nine, the water supply for the lot is an existing onsite well. That's 422. 423, information on the subdivision. The proposed subdivision name is BH 1049 LLC. The lots in that subdivision are, there's only one lot. Item three, refer to attachment G. Yeah, so G, yeah. Attachment G is the site plan. We're just gonna work through it again and again. Same thing on item four, the attachment G, you know, five, six, seven, and eight, all refer back to the site plan submitted. Item nine, there's no existing wetlands, bodies of water, or shoreline zone within the parcel. Therefore, the criterion is not applicable. 10, you know, there's, there's just nothing requiring stormwater management. Again, they're just parcelling off a lot. There's no associated construction. 11, there are no existing proposed sewer or water mains, culverts, or drains. 12 and 13, refer back to the site plan submitted. 14, they submitted a FEMA floodplain map. That's attachment F. And 15 is NA. And then moving on to 424, that talks about information showing compliance of Luso and the subdivision ordinance. We're not here tonight for compliance, but the applicant, you know, they state shall submit evidence to the board to show compliance with section five, the ordinance, section six, the Luso. And you shall review that at the next hearing. And then you know, section five of the subdivision ordinance, you know, we talked about just the, the general requirements. And there are five, one, you know, the, they tell, you know, there's a buffer strip requirement. The applicant states the subdivision will be a commercial subdivision buffers and screens may be used by the individual lot owner will conform with town's requirements. By two, conformance with other laws and regulations, applicant states that the proposed subdivision will conform to the laws and regulations as necessary. By three, construction prohibited. There's no proposed construction here. By four digits, catch basins, there's no proposed construction. By five easements, the applicant states that there are no easements through the proposed lot to be subdivided as shown on the amended subdivision plan submitted. Again, that's attachment G. Five, six, dedication for year-round housing. It's a commercial property. Commercial use, so NA. Five, seven, lot density. Then five, seven, there's three subsections. Five, seven, one. African talks about the lot size, width, depth, front and shape orientation, minimum setback or in accordance with Luso. Five, seven, two, there's no proposed onsite sewage disposal. Five, seven, three, the proposed subdivision shall be considered a conventional subdivision. Section five, eight, sewage disposal as two subsections. Five, eight, one, five, eight, two. Five, eight, one, applicant states that the existing development will continue to use the town's public sewer. And five, eight, two, there's no proposed private sewer. Five, nine, land not suitable for development. And the applicant states that the, no portion of the proposed subdivision is located on land below sea level or within the hundred-year floodplain. Five, 10, open space provisions as two subsections. Five, 10, one and two. Five, 10, one, the applicant requests waive this requirement as the proposed subdivision will not alter the existing landscape. We'll look at that next time. Five, 10, two, no open spaces reserved for the proposed subdivision. Five, five, 11 talks about wells. And there's two subsections there. We've got five, 11, one, there are no proposed wells associated with the subdivision. Five, 11, two. The existing development located on the proposed subdivided parcel will continue to use the existing private well. So there's already a well there. And they're not proposing to test the water at this time. Five, 12, applicant is requesting to waive the performance bond requirement. Five, 14, street design and construction. There are three subsections. Five, 14, one, there's no proposed roads. Five, 14, two, there are no dead-end streets. Five, 14, three, the proposed subdivision doesn't, does not have a public roadway. Five, 15, access to direct sunlight. The proposed subdivision will not limit access to direct sunlight. Five, 16, cluster workforce subdivision. It's not a cluster workforce subdivision. It's a standard subdivision with commercial use. And six, the applicant is requesting waive sections five, 10, one, open space, and five, 12, the performance bond. And we probably should first have a motion to find the application complete. The board has any questions, let's hear them now, too.
Bill, I just wonder are the applicants taking care of a few things with saying that they want a waiver? And that seems kind of relevant, whether we think there's, that's conceivable as to whether the application's complete, isn't it? Or, or we just have to review whether that's a waiver and I just don't know how to fit that into completeness.
Well, maybe that's more, maybe we circle back to the waiver, Meredith, during compliance.
I definitely think we need to discuss it during compliance. But if, if we don't think that they, I guess, if they don't get the waiver, then the application's not complete. The request for a waiver is to ask to not, not bother with that section. So they don't have that section because, anyway. So I, that's why it confuses me.
Maybe the applicant, Sean, could you talk about the two waiver requests?
Yeah, so one was in regards to a landscape plan. I believe the, we go back, the open space. Yeah, open space for, I think it calls for open space or, and a landscape plan requirement where it's all developed. We're not proposing any open space or any additional landscaping.
And you're really not doing anything on the lot to change.
Exact, yeah, exactly. There's, there's no, no changes proposed from what's already out there and being developed or been developed, I should say. And the second one being the performance bond, typically the performance bond is to cover improvements that are being made to make sure that the improvements are done accordingly. And if they're not, there's, the bond is available to fix any deficiencies. But the case where, again, we're not proposing to construct anything. So I guess whether, maybe, maybe it's more applicable or more, or it's better to say that that section is not applicable as opposed to request a waiver. But so that's why we put a waiver on the performance bond is there wouldn't be anything to that would require a bond, if you will.
Meredith, based on the applicant's reply, how do you feel about the waiver request?
I guess it would take more review of like, why do we ask for, if you were developing a subdivision to be, you know, many housing lots and, and we require that there be designated open spaces, this is just lots. Like, at what point do you start developing something and, and we get to work back in the aspects of what we require of a subdivision? And I guess the, the a big issue has commonly been the road into subdivisions. And there is a gravel road into this lot. And it has, it crosses And it has, it crosses over with what they designate as driveway, but they just write, draw the center of the gravel road is the driveway and they'll. So that's, that's a road because it serves more than two lots. It goes up to the. AT&amp;T tower. That's a different lot, right?
So the applicant's saying, Meredith, that the, the current road that's there is not part of the, the lot being created.
But remember when we had the subdivision over on the beach hill crossroad? And somebody wanted to. Go in off of a right of way and we, they, they just wanted to use an existing right of way. And we said that they'd have to develop that to subdivision standards. They weren't changing their lot. You know, I guess they're cutting off, they're cutting this apart and it impacts.
Do you feel though that they?
I don't know.
I guess, I, I guess just to speak to that, I think. A lot of the issues that, that you're raising are in relation to the existing subdivision and those should have been, I guess. Issues or things that were reviewed initially, the lot that we're proposing to create now is. I guess separate from, it doesn't use that road. It's. It's, we're not doing anything, I guess, that affects. Whether the original subdivision had an open space requirement or, or what the status of that road was that accessed the other lots. We're not changing, changing any of that aspect of the previously approved subdivision.
We ran, that was the same argument last time. Was it wasn't changing any, you know, it should have been reviewed, should have been done in the original development of subdivision. This, that's a common thing. And I guess my feeling is it is relevant, but that although you're focusing on the one lot. You're taking one lot and splitting into two. And so it's, it's affecting both lots. The both sides of the lot, the owners, the same of both halves, because it's all one lot right now. So to say, well, we're cutting off a lot that doesn't even involve that, you're cutting, and but the other lot that's getting cut off does involve that road. I, I don't know. We, we've held it again, we've, we've told people they had to develop the road. When they made changes to a subdivision before, even though it should have done, done in the beginning. And I. I don't know how that's relevant.
So back to the, the waiver request, I mean, five, ten, one is an open space and landscape plan. You feel like they need to. Submit a landscape plan here?
I don't, why was it, why is it not part of, how did they get away with not having it as part of the original subdivision? If that's something that we require. Why do we require it? And when do we require it that the, this subdivision doesn't have it?
I think. And. Dave, any thoughts?
But I think generally those items fall. When a, when a parcel is being developed. As opposed, I mean, every, every square inch of this lot is, is already developed.
Remember the lot that we're talking about is the whole entire thing. It is one lot being split into two. So we can talk about both. Sides, just because they have us, they're focused on the one side that they want to sell. Both sides of the lot are part of this discussion. They could just as well have us focused on the backside of the lot rather than the front side of the lot.
But how, how is parcelling off the front? Piece with direct access off of one oh two that isn't even served by the. The driveway to the private residence and the road to the back of the lot. Relative to a waiver request for a landscape plan.
I guess this application I'm saying could just as, I don't, I don't know. I don't really understand. The requirements. Uh, yeah, it's sort of hard to understand unless you were developing it for housing lots. But I guess I'm seeing the, I see this application, you could say. That it is a request to cut off the back lot. Rather than cut off the front lot, that they, that the development, what they're in this application asking is to separate off. I guess I'm thinking they're probably going to develop the back end of the lot, that, that what's going to happen is. Let's say this was a family lot and somebody wanted to cut off a parcel for their child. You know, and the empty lot was out back and they were going to give it to the kid and they, they came and said, the plan is to put a house back there. That's what they're gonna do. They're gonna, what they really want, you know, they may want to sell the front lot, but. Obviously, they're gonna probably want to develop. The back end of the lot. So that back end of the lot's just as much of an. Issue and probably more of the issue than the front end of the lot. Nothing's changing on the front end of the lot. They're gonna plan to do something on the back end of it.
So I think in, in the terms of. That sounds like a compliance discussion and relative to, you know. Potentially finding the application complete. If we were to find it complete, you know, I feel like that if that's still a relative question as we get into compliance, that we can address it with the information submitted. And I feel like, you know, we've always, the board is empowered to go back and revisit any. Any findings we've made in the past. And if, you know, during compliance, we find that we need, just need more information on the road and driveway, then so be it.
They've addressed every issue. So that's, they, they may not have adequately addressed it, but they provide us with every information on each issue. So that's fine.
So Christie, any thoughts?
Not really.
Tracy.
No, I don't have anything to add at this time. I'm still pondering the question you brought up, Meredith.
I mean, I guess I, when I look at the lot, if I'm reading it right, the one. I, I think of the smaller one as being cleaved off of the bigger one, but it says the smaller one is two point one five acres and the totality was what, twenty point two three? So I, I kind of tend to think of it as the little one peeling off of the big one, not the big one peeling off of the little one. Not that that helps.
But in terms of like, if you were going to say there should be designated open space. Everybody says, well, it's only two point. One acres and it's pretty fully developed. Yeah, but that's in subdivision and they own both sides of this. So the designated. Open space area is potentially in the twenty seven undeveloped acres. And that does not seem inconceivable. I guess that's just, you know, I'm saying it's not, it's not. The two point one acre, the application isn't only for a two point one acre. It's for. A splitting one lot in half and it involves twenty seven acres. So we shouldn't waive things because, oh, it's only two point one acres. It's, no, it's a lot more than two acres.
Yeah, I don't know that we should waive things based on the size so much as the relevance to the specific character of that lot. I, I agree with you on the size. Yeah, yeah, on both lots.
But it's irrelevant to both lots because they are making both lots. They are the same owner and they're making both lots. It doesn't matter which one's smaller or larger. We're not making just one two point one acre. We're also making the other lot. And so the other lot should be reviewed that way, too.
I look at open space a lot more focused on residential rather than commercial. The ordinance doesn't say that, but. That's how I look at it. It's a. When you have a commercial area, you know, I'm not sure you require open space in a commercial area. I don't think we've required open space in very many subdivisions.
Well, we can discuss that issue when we discuss the. I guess that's, yeah, I didn't mean to hold things up. I just wanted to make sure that we, it was. Seemed complete. And as the request for a waiver make it a complete application, I guess the answer is yes.
There have been other lots split off this piece of land, but there wasn't any. Buffering required or any open space or anything. Cell tower and Banga Hydros, the substation, we didn't, we didn't require anything on those.
If I could just add, I guess, one thing, I, I believe the waiver request is for the landscape plan. I'd have to double check the ordinance as to whether or not open space is a requirement. Because we, we stated we're not proposing open space. So I know sometimes there is designated open space, whether it's required or not. I'm not sure if it's a requirement. But we stated we're not proposing to have any and we're requesting a waiver from providing a, a landscape plan. Which would typically be required for. A, a developed portion of the subdivision. And in this case. The developed portion is, is already developed. So we're not proposing any landscaping there. If, if the rest of the subdivision was at some point in the future, I guess. Developed or. Or subdivided further, they'd have to come back to the board or they have to come back for a site plan. And at that point, I'm guessing the requirement for landscaping would be needed, but at this point, it's. Anything that's proposed to be, or there's nothing proposed to be developed. The development's already occurred. Hopefully I didn't confuse the issue.
No. As far as the road's concerned, this new lot, I don't think is going to have the right to use that gravel road. They're not gonna, they, they, they said that, that there were no easements associated with the parcel. It looks like the easement for the road going up back does overlap this parcel a little bit, but that doesn't give them the right to use. Use the driveway on the other side.
So again, there is a waiver request for a landscape plan. And then the second request is for a performance bond and, and I would think the performance bond issue is a little bit cleaner. I mean, they're, it's not doing anything. So why, why would we require a bond for? For that? So we probably should first have a motion about the waiver request. And then any discussion and then. A motion on finding the application complete.
I don't know that we have to have a vote on the waiver request because we're not reviewing the application. I think I, I just created the sort of question of whether a waiver request makes an application complete. And I guess, I feel like what we said is yes, that, that qualifies. It doesn't mean that we're going to accept the waiver, but it's still. The applicant, I, I'd make a motion that the application is complete.
Yeah, I agree with that. Anastasia, a second.
Hold on a second. Heidi's got a comment.
I apologize. Um, do we not usually go through section six as well? I don't think we do.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't done that yet.
Sorry. Withdrawn.
Let's just press the pause button on that. So then, then we jump over to Luze and we've got. Submittal requirements for section six, A, B, and C. And let's, let's just go through that. So. Section six, A, as we all know, are the general performance standards and. Section six, A, one compatibility. You know, the applicant talks about it being a proposed subdivision that's commercial and compatible with the village commercial use there. Six, A, two erosion and sedimentation control. Really, there's, there's no work there being. Being proposed. Six, A, three highway safety. The lot is currently developed and consists of multiple businesses. There's no proposed changes. Six, A, four. Impact on town services. African talks about there's no proposed changes to existing development. Six, A, five land suitability. There's no alterations proposed. Six, A, six lighting outdoor. There's no lighting proposed. Six, A, seven stormwater. There's no proposed changes to the existing development again. Six, A, eight vegetation, same thing again. They're not changing the lot or vegetation in any way. Six, A, nine dust fumes, vapors, odors, and gases. Again. No proposed changes. And then we go into section six, B, specific performance standards for activities and land uses. Here essentially the applicant's talking about the individual sections of six, B. If they're relative to not, the majority of them are not, such as six, B, one agriculture, six, B, two air landing sites, six, B, three beach constructions. Six, B, four boat storage, six, B, five campground, six, B, six driveway construction. They're not altering the existing driveway in any way. Six, B, seven excavation or filling. There's again, no work proposed. Six, B, eight fences and walls. Six, B, nine individual private campsites, six, B, ten home occupations, eleven lots. Here they state that they're, you know, they. There's only one lot submitted with the proposed subdivision, again, shown on. Attachment G. Six, B, twelve manufactured homes. There's no homes associated with the lot being created. Six, B, thirteen mineral extraction, fourteen mobile homes, fifteen sanitary standards. There's no proposed changes to existing development. Use of the town public sanitary system, six, B, sixteen. Sign regulations, they talk about the, there already is an existing sign on one oh two. Six, B, eighteen vehicles unregistered. You know, they're in the village commercial district, so it doesn't apply. Six, B, eighteen. Wireless communication facilities. I don't think they're adding another cell phone tower on the lot. Six, B, nineteen animal husbandry. No animals being proposed to be cultivated on the lot. Six, B, twenty mobile food vendors. There's no food trucks on the lot proposed. Six, B, twenty one rooming house. There's no residential component to the lot being created. Six, B, twenty two host hotels and motels. There's an existing multi business building in the village commercial district. There's no change in use. And six, C shoreline zoning standards, the lot's technically not in the shoreline zone. And. And it's not applicable and as is section five point nine. If there's any questions on the completeness of what they've submitted in their application relative to the six, A, B, and C. Please speak up. None heard from the board and maybe then we'd circle back to the completeness motion and we just. Amend the motion and make sure we address the. The sections of completeness review, the. Four, two, one, two, three, and four, five point. Second, five, and then section six, A, B, and C of Luze.
I make a motion to find the application complete. Is, did you want me to add all that?
Heidi, did you get those sections?
I did.
Yeah.
And we're on the agenda.
Yeah, Heidi got it, Meredith.
Okay. Thank heavens.
So you made a motion, right, Meredith?
Yes.
Okay. And it was complete. Okay. I second that emotion. Emotion.
Very emotional board.
It's been a long day. I'm sorry.
Kristy. Any further discussion? None heard. So all those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Kristy?
Anastasia, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Dave?
Big Dashmore, aye.
Myself, William Hanley, aye. If I'm not mistaken, that's it for completeness.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Sean.
So again, we've got the public hearing date on the 10th of November. At that hearing, we'll, we'll do compliance and the public hearing. We keep that signed off on the, on the completeness review. That should be it for tonight.
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, thank you.
Bill, do you need a motion to adjourn? Or do you have others?
Well, we've got item four, other. Is there any other tonight? Not hearing any other. I would say, Meredith, that puts us to item five, adjournment.
I'm always about two minutes ahead with the motions.
You're on it tonight, Meredith.
Let's get this over with. We have the opportunity for a really short meeting.
My gosh, it's amazing. May I, I make a motion to adjourn? Anastasia?
I second.
Got Dave first.
Dave can have it.
All right. Any further discussion?
Let's talk about adjourning. I don't know. Should we adjourn? Let's debate it.
All right. Well, all those in favor, Meredith?
Aye.
Kristy?
Anastasia, aye.
Dave?
Big Dashmore, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Myself, William Hanley, aye. And I'm gonna make sure I do this right. Well, good to see everybody.
Good night.
Good night. Stopped reporting.